Yeah, I wish the laws on the limits of planning for it. But it has a range.
Who's here?
Do you need an agenda?
No, I got it. I have the whole. First one here is a continued public hearing. Defender of subdivision approval for metal lands at Willard Street along the Naughtley side of Willard Street, including number 671 Willard Street.
Does the board want a brief update?
Sure.
Yes. In front of you are a set of plans, or a set of revised plans from the engineer, and those are based on, in response to board comments, public comments, and comments from city staff, including my director's report. Due to other, due to the nature of timing, I did not do a revised director's report for this. So I believe, I was talking with Mr. Hannigan this afternoon. He says he's going to go through item by item, addressing how his office addressed the comments.
For the record, Chris Anson, the head of engineering, care about having legal LLC for a minute or two. During the previous hearing, there was a couple out of line items within the director's report and before the likely work through those reports, basically, we probably have the same page, so it would change how we made those plans up. Comment number one is relative to a topographical chart between two sheets. The property that was in question was lot number 15. One of the sheets depicted as having an area of 21,290 square feet. In reality, it was 21,920 square feet. So two numbers were swapped inadvertently in the site plan portion of everything, but everything was still correctly, it had been like the land sheets. Lot number, comment number two is relative to lot number one's proposed frontage. There is only 74.9 feet along Willard Street, but the frontage for lot number one, which is located at the corner of the property, or pretty much at the entrance of the site, is actually pulling its frontage off of the proposed roadway, and that has excess of 40 feet, so very much a compliance zone relative to that. The next comment was relative to a symbol that we were utilizing as part of the access and utility estimate. We've added that to the actual plan legend, so that's showing up on all plan sets, so helps clarify any discrepancies on the plans. Second comment was relative to the floodplain wording that we had put there on our plan notes. As originally said, maybe, given the location of everything being outside of the floodplain, we revised those to say that it is, portions of the property are subject to the floodplain restrictions. But in the previous hearing, as we said, we're not performing any work within that area, so special progress not required. Third comment was relative to several of the lots being within the 100-foot buffer zone of the shade wetlands on the property. As part of the filing for the conservation, we did the initial filing to accommodate the initial tree clearing of the property, along with the infrastructure and the roadway designs. It is noted that as the houses start getting built, they'll have to go forward commission for their own separate orders and conditions. So we do acknowledge that in future, that will have to be done. The fourth comment was relative to potential, or relative to open space within the property. Currently, we're not proposing any kind of parks or common space on the property, or within the development itself. The fifth comment was relative to sidewalks. So there is some discrepancies between the two portions of the subdivision regulations. One portion does state that, in fact, that it has to be five feet in width around the entire subdivision. That's per Section 9.1H, which the director had pointed out. However, when you look at 9.1F.2 of the regulations, it actually says four, for minor road subdivision portion. So we designed everything to the four-foot standard, so we leave that at the discretion of the board, whether or not to add the extra foot to the actual sidewalks, or run with the four-foot as the sum. Comment number six was relative to the plant trees, or the street trees being planted on both sides of the road. They were originally on the plan, but because of the line types and coloring of the plan, it was very difficult to see, so we actually made it a little bit more prominent on the plan set, and it also included a tree, the tree symbol that was utilized within the plan legend to, again, accommodate all of those issues. Comment number seven was relative to bank plantings. There are several areas. There's one area within the development that does have a slope greater than three to one. So we have added additional notes requiring, providing low growth, evergreen, shrubbery along the one area that does have that two-to-one slope, so that will suffice for the bank plantings along that area. Comment number eight is relative to the street names. Those were given to the developer, and they are the names that loans for veterans. Comment number nine was relative to butters across the church drive. We have added the additional butter label. It's actually just one giant parcel that's along the northernmost portion of the property and encompasses the entire area. So because it is cut off on the plain view, we have added that extra label, just to make sure everybody's clear on that. And the last comment was relative to the dead-end street length. We have added the additional notations onto the plan dictating that there is a 266-foot dead-end lane as part of the final portion of the cul-de-sac that's being proposed. So we're still within the 500-foot requirement by the subdivision regulations. And that's pretty much it. Like I said, the changes that were made with this plan revision were relatively minor in nature in reward to clarify any comments that may have brought up by this director. If there's any questions, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just as I was trying to record.
Sure.
What we had done in the previous letter and the previous plan set was to say that a lot of these smaller items would be included in the plans that were to be endorsed, and what the director had asked us to do was just announce, so that they don't have to add conditions of the overall package. So now, those items that were going to be done prior to endorsement have actually been included in the plan set. So those really are the changes that were made from the last step of this.
So all those changes are in this?
Yeah, the changes that we had closed and do prior to endorsement are now on, included in the plan.
Okay. You have anything else you would like to add? Okay, I'll open up the audience.
If I may.
Sure.
Okay. One of the other things that came up was from the city councilors, for the board councillor.
Okay.
And he had sent over some various questions that we had tried to provide and address answers to relative to some of the regulations.
Right.
And there was emails going back and forth. So the last round of emails that were received this past week were some of his comments, and specifically, what I wanted to do was, can we have, if this wouldn't have that email?
It's in your packet.
It should be here.
And I know, I know the councillor's here as well. So it's kind of on the third page, if you print it out, it'd be on the third page, between me and I guess the second or third. Unless you did have one in front.
So we see the issue, which number in your first?
Starting off with one. That's the greatest, right? No, I think you were adding.
Great, yeah.
Nope. Nope, I want you to tell it up.
Yeah. Here we go.
Okay. So the first part of the comment is the comments made by the councillor, then I had some responses to them, so the first part was about the agreement, the homeless agreement, and he had originally had some questions to the template document relative to the HOA. And the basic essence of that is that the HOA document, I believe, is the document that gets recorded, that then each deed refers to the recorded document. So that the HOA document that has been approved by quote unquote page, that document would go on file as part of the initial stage of the project, probably immediately after endorsement, with all the recording documents that happen along the way. And then from there, the deeds, as they're conveyed from the developer to a homeowner, the deed would then refer back to that document within a reference within the deed being subject to homeowners association. So that's all part of how that gets worked out by the real estate board to deal with that stuff. So that, I believe that that's, I believe that that's been addressed. I know that he wants further comment on that, but I think that that's the mechanism that's in place by the, by the legalese that is developed under the, under the regulations and under the, I'm sorry, under the homeless document. The second item talks about the conditions of having the dollar value relative to the construction cost, the roadway, and all that figured out ahead of time. As we've discussed at previous meetings, typically, when it's happening, development like this, once we go into construction, there's all lots are put up as covenant against the roadway. When the road is built to a certain level, then the developer can come in and bond the remaining work of the roadway. That bond estimate is usually put together by us, reviewed by the DPW, and then approved by the planning board for a bonding estimate for the remaining portion of the construction, which could include anything from, you know, final plantings, curving sidewalks, final paving, roadway bounds, as-built acceptance plans, all those things that get added in at the end. So that's how that's typically done. It's, it's really, it's something that's done prior to or during the endorsement process. And then, and it's changed as you go through the development. When you go from pulling building permits, now you have to have, if you're going to pull a building permit, those lots, those lots need to be released by the board, while bonding has to be put in place to take care of any additional roadway work done. That's the typical mechanism that's done with that. So I think he, I think he agrees with that, that that exists in that manner. The next comment is relative to Section 11, which is part of the maintenance requirements within the regulations. And there's two pieces to this. There's one relative to the maintenance of the project prior to acceptance, and then there's another part that is the maintenance of the project relative to the homeowners' association responsibility for their maintenance. And the cost estimates that are being asked for are related to the maintenance and the O&M process, which has been provided, that was provided to the attorneys relative to their review of the covenant agreements. It's also part of the order conditions, the values have been added to that O&M since that time. So those numbers are all part of the record, they're all in there for that value. And those values will have to be revisited and approved at some point when we get into the construction phase, or in the, in the attorney look of the land over phase, to make sure that the seed money, as they put it, is available for the project to basically make sure that the portions of the development that are being maintained by the homeowners' association are actually funded properly. And that's all part of that HOA agreement, so I believe that that's actually in place as well. The funds, another statement that Mr. Cormy makes, that the funds will be established prior to release of any law, but the calculation needs to be done prior to main board approval. The calculation of the funds has been provided in the O&M document, which we review as part of the HOA document. That's one of the, that's one of the exhibits that goes along with the HOA document, which is a DRC in the, in the project. So that's, that's already there, and that's been reviewed. There's another question about the development impact statement that has been submitted to the board. I believe that that was reviewed both by staff and by DPW at the hearing. And I know, I know he's now asking for a third-party review of that. I think that that's unnecessary at this point in time, because of the fact that a lot of stuff that is relative to private report, fell with the engineering department on, on this relative, relative, mostly items are in the DIS. So that's, that's my comment on his comments, and the open areas.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll talk, yes?
It's Dave Cormier, was recently councillor, nine years on the road. You know, I, the first comment, you know, regarding what's being recorded in each and every deed, I can't say I disagree, I just want clarity. If you read Section 11, Item 2, in cases where a homeowners' association is required, there shall be written into each deed for every building lot in the subdivision, a set of covenants and restrictions, the form and content of which shall be subject to the review and approval of the planning board, which shall provide for the following, and it lists mandatory membership, establishment of a maintenance trust fund. You know, when the homeowner's closing the property, when it's conveyed, they may very well sign a document that points them to the homeowners' agreement, but that I'm not sure about, and I want clarity on that. I don't know if there's something else that should be reviewed prior to the planning board making a decision, but there are documents here, it talks about, that should be reviewed by the planning board. So I don't know what those, I don't know, compound numbers.
That is, that is.
That is the whole.
That is the homeowners' association.
Homeowners' association.
That's been reviewed by the planning board.
We reviewed it, went through it. We made a lot of changes. Then with the copayment and page.
And it looks good.
Oh, KMP rather.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And they, they in turn suggested some changes, so those changes are made it. I've looked at it. I think the homeowners are all covered here. It's, it's a little bit unique in what we're doing here with the homeowners' association, and I hope we dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's, but we'll be standing on top of it, okay? And we do want to make sure that, a number of things, that the, the homeowners themselves are protected in what we're allowing to be done, and that as a whole, as an entity as a whole. Also, that, that we're protecting the neighbors, so to make sure that the, what is in the OHA, so what's in the agreement, is that this agreement just doesn't fall by the wayside. And that's why we're requiring that this agreement, unlike others that we had, will be part of their deed. So when they sign it, they will get a deed, they'll get a copy of it.
Right.
Okay? And they'll have to read it, they'll have to, and if they don't understand it, they always can go back to us, or go back to some other legal method to get an understanding. The, the whole plan is that with these, these number of homes, once it gets up and running, they will have an association, will have a board of directors, they'll have a treasurer, they'll collect their money, and they'll do their projects as a homeowners' association. At that time, when they're functioning, it will be turned over to the board from the land, the owner. And a bond will be required to cover the requirements, and those to be covered, such as the, the drainage areas, okay? So these will be done upfront as part of the package, and once that's accepted, that's one thing. On the second hand, as we release lots, okay, it's still under the, the developer, the control of the developer. So they'll come to us, say, okay, we've put in the road, we've accepted the, the DPW has accepted the sorbaines and the water. And say, okay, lot six, I just picked one out of the air, 678, we want to start first. And okay, those lots are free, DPW says, the base code is done, the infrastructure is in place, we'll release it. When we get to the point where we had, say, I want to say three lots, or four lots, all depends on how much work is involved, and we will know at that time what the dollar value is. We'll at that time say, we need a bond. That's where the cash actually comes into play, is at the end. And we say, we need a bond of $150,000. That bond, we'll get that, and that's held, the two signatures, okay, by the treasurer. There's actually documentation that we have for that. That goes into the treasurer's office, and a passbook account is established, and it's held in the treasurer's office. So as things get done on the checklist, then we say, okay, we'll release $20,000 on the road. Until we get down to the end, then we do a final kind of double-checking the association figures, double-checking all the work that's been done, okay? And then get the finalization on the road acceptance. And that has to go to the city council.
Right.
So they have to have an as-built plan for all of the, everything that was done, complete, an as-built plan, and then that as-built plan gets filed. That goes to the, they then have to petition the city council. At that point, we release the bond. If we've gone through the as-built, and it looks good, DPW checks it all off, they say it's good, then we, we then release it, and it's up to the city council to accept the road as it's been accepted, or go further and do something. But we can't hold the bond any further than that point. So the requirements that we have to say is that they have to request a petition to the city council for the bond.
If I may, to the chair, and that doesn't relieve the, the funding of the homeowners' association, the 5% of the construction cost value of the homeowners' association item. That's a separate document, separate item.
That's separate.
And that, so that 5% value is based upon the value of the construction cost, and the drainage system, and those components that are being maintained by the homeowners' association, along with the sewer force main, and the components that are being maintained by the, the homeowners' association on that sewer stuff. So all that is a separate 5% number, which goes, it's above and beyond the city's bonding relative to roadway construction.
Right. So what, basically, in a nutshell, what you're saying is this section that I just read, they're basically going to sign something that refers to the homeowners' agreement.
That is correct.
It's all in the homeowners' agreement.
That is correct.
And it'll probably be referenced with a quote unquote page that it was recorded on when the subdivision was recorded.
That's correct.
Okay. If that's the case, then.
That's what, that's what, that's what our plan is, and that's what we hope we're following through, and that's get done.
Because basically, what it explains here is what's in the homeowners' agreement.
Right.
So if that's the case, then I'm good on that.
This is the most extensive homeowners' association document that I've seen.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, so.
I can't wait for it all to unfold, to see how it's going to work out.
Okay, I think we've, we've made, we've, everybody made a real effort to make this work.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I'm trying to go there.
Just the other, another comment about the, the 5%, seeing Section, Section 11. Item number three, it says, "The Department of Public Works for the Planning Board's consultant engineer shall be required to approve all cost estimates prior to the planning board approval." So I know Mr. Hannigan mentioned that there was some number of this. I didn't, does anybody know what that is?
It's in the operation and maintenance agreement, or, or documents, which are approved at this point, by, I presume they're approved by DPW, since, but in here, we have the estimated costs paid upon ours means for maintaining the deep sun catch basins, the hydrowork units, the riprap pavements, the spillways, the storm tech, underground storage areas, detention basins, and the outfall structures. And we also have the ultimate responsibility of who's going to end up being responsible for those items, whether it is the city or the homeowners' association. On top of that, there would also be an additional maintenance fee, or maintenance value for the force main, which the, the force main E1 systems has put a number out now of about four and a half a year.
Right.
Okay? It's what they typically do that.
Now, the homeowners' association at that time, what the homeowners' association has established, they will determine their own fees. So you may, they may have a monthly fee of 100 bucks, I don't know, 120 bucks, it might be 30 bucks. And that will be determined by the number of homes that they have, and, and the value of what they, their budgeted expenses, which will rely on the input from Mr. Hannigan and the DPW, and the basic documents that were put together.
So there's basically three amounts of money that are set aside upfront. One of them is this fee, which is the homeowner's money, and it stays there.
Right.
And that fee's got to be determined by, prior to planning board approval, according to item number three. Then there's two other, you have, you have the bond, you have the regular bond for the project, right? And then there's another, another section that talks about 20% of the cost, which is held for three years.
And nine and eight.
So that, it's nine and eight, operation and maintenance plan shall be provided for proper maintenance of the storm drain systems, and to ensure the system functions as designed and aligns with the EP best management practice. All detention or retention basins shall be responsibility of developer, and subsequently, the homeowners' association, once established, as has to its long-term maintenance and maintenance of the landscaping. Said detention and retention basis with a pertinent should be guaranteed from defect in construction and operation by posting of a performance with defect guarantee for a minimum period of three years, the amount not to exceed 20% of the value of said movements. So when, so when the developer turns over that responsibility to the homeowners' association, okay, the cost relative to that construction, 20% of that has to go into, has to be.
Into an escrow.
No, it's not even escrow. It, it basically, what it is, it's a performance bond.
Performance, right.
Basically, what they do is they can put, if it's, if the cost of construction is $50,000, then they have to put a bond in place for three years to cover any defects to that, to that system that may happen in that three-year period.
Right.
Okay? That's the way, that's the way I would get it.
And the purpose of that is that the contractor is liable for the three years, and that will give the homeowners' association time to establish itself.
Right.
Establish its records, establish a, a foundation or a treasury, you might say, okay? So they then have the monies to maintain it themselves.
Right. So that money will sit there, so even if the city council accepts the roads, within six months of the completion of this project, that's going to sit there?
That's separate.
Yes.
That's right.
If the three is, the regular bond gets returned, and the other homeowners' association money will have been put there by the developer prior to any conveyance of land.
Two sets of books.
Three.
Oh, three sets of books, okay.
Three.
Right, but there's one, one is the road of the city. Once, once the city has accepted the roads, and the road's been accepted, okay, and we have a bond, and that closes, but the homeowners' association and the developer have their set of books that they have to develop otherwise. So that continues on infinitum, until we, you know, something changes, but that's how that, you know, so it's, it's a way of transferring money from the developer to the homeowners' association, and covering the, the equity in that for three years.
Right. So what, again, what was the figure on all that material that you talked about on the other one? Did they get it figured out?
Well, there's, there's two that I was about to talk about. There's, there's, it's, the difference in the operation and maintenance cost value and the 5% seed money, okay? Just because it's, the cost of that, the annual maintenance expense would be somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 relative to the detention basins and the force main maintenance and stuff like that, in that range. That's based upon ours means and, and information from the E1 systems. However, the 5% number that you, that the association gets upfront from the developer as seed money, that doesn't just sit there and not get contributed to. At some point. At some point, each of the homeowners start to basically pay a monthly or annual fee to that, to basically keep that up and replenish that over time. And when, when that fee is developed, what also is figured into that, similar to a condominium association, is also replacement cost, okay? So there's a replacement cost value that has to come into, into play with respect to the maintenance and the long-term viability of the sewer systems. Each of the homeowners will own their own pump system, but the force main will need maintenance. And at some point along the way, if, if one of the valves needs to be changed from the main, that comes out of that homeowners' association money. If, if the storm scepter needs to be cleaned, that comes out of the homeowners' association, homeowners' association money. And it's, it's, it's somewhat self-regulating, so if they end, if they start off with, you know, I'm not sure what the number is, they say they start off with a, with a $20,000 pot to work with, and they spend $6,000 a year and never replenish it, then, then that's not effective. So the idea is that they have a certain amount of money that they put in each year to keep that pot up. And it's sometimes what happens in condominiums as well, is the, you might start off with $500 a year per home, then all of a sudden, they realize that they have way too much money, they don't need that much money, so they can drop it down to 250. Or if they start off with 250, and they realize it's not enough, they then have to adjust it up, okay? So that happens through the board of directors that have the power to basically assess, assess those items along the way.
Yeah, one of the things that I, you know, that, that initial seed money, it says in here, it can't be touched for 15 years. So, you know, that's, I don't know where the homeowners' association starts with, with the initial amount of money that they start paying, monthly, annually, yeah, whatever it is. But, but that initial seed money, just for the record, you know, page 54, that, that principal amount of money can't be touched for 15 years. So basically, that's, that seed money is to ensure the long-term, but in the shorter-term maintenance, they have to be putting enough money into that account, you know, to do, to start doing maintenance, I would say after probably three years, they got to do their first round of maintenance. And they got to be doing that for another 12 years beyond that before they can touch any of that initial money. So, you know, I'm sure all that's taken into account, and I still don't know what these figures are, which, which, which are supposed to be...
Well, what we got to get, as far as I understand it, is we'll get the actual figures, we'll get the actual bill numbers, okay? Because everything today is an estimate.
Right.
So, so what we'll have to get is, you know, what is, some, sometime in the future, that will have to be determined.
Right.
Because, see, that's why we hold a covenant, and we held our own bonds on the property. And before we get our final releases, the final acceptance, okay, that all has to be determined.
Right.
So how much is now, we, we spent, they'll know that they spent 150, 300,000, I don't know what the number is, on, on the, the water system, okay? And so, and then they'll take the percentages off of that.
Right. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure if the DPW's engineers knew the plans, they, they know how many feet of pipe, they know, you know, roughly how much it costs to, you know, the detention pond and all that stuff. You know, that's where they get their figures from, they're, you know, they're engineers, you know, that's probably very simple math, the plan that's, you know, well drawn up. And I still haven't seen, I still haven't seen the number, but...
Well, that was, like I said, it was in the operation maintenance package, which was submitted with the other information to the attorneys. So that's, that's what we have, and I do agree with, reading the regulations, I do agree with the council that a 15-year timeframe is there.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll probably have to have an, the developer take on the maintenance for a little bit, while the kitty is being filled up with the homeowners, as, as house slots come on.
Right.
If there's some initial assessment that the homeowner gets it closed and to start funding that.
And another, just one final question regarding the, the DAS. Has the planning board ever formally requested a traffic study for this particular project? And if not, why not?
I can't answer that question. I take it we did not?
Right. And I don't, I hate to mix projects, but I know that before another project was done up there, one was done, so I'm sure that things have changed.
Yes, when, when the other project was done across the street...
In a road, right.
Further up on Willard Street there, okay? That was 70, 77 homes?
Oh, right, right.
Okay? Uh, it was down further, okay? That's, you know, that was 77 homes, and we did do a traffic study on that at that time.
Right.
When you look at the, the determination, is you look at the number of homes, and the total number of the homes, and other studies that we've had done in the past, like the lights at Willard Street and Central, okay? That's where we look for the impacts. Those were originally at a failure rate. And then what happened was, that was tied into the New England Development Project, the Walmart, and the other developers in that area, okay, where they got together, they put money in, they bought the land, New England Development, and I think some, I don't know, Billy, I think you, well, did some engineering on it?
I have significant knowledge on this.
Yeah, I know you do. And then it finally was built by the state.
So if I may, part of the reason why the traffic studies were done back then is because there was a failing condition at Willard and Central.
Right.
And part of the reason for doing the traffic study back then was because of the fact that there were not measures in place to allow the traffic crews to work in that, at that intersection. So it was a combination of Brooks Pond, New England Development Group, I believe Castellano had some research, had some, and they all worked together, basically. And I think actually, Mr. Pivenzi paid for the actual final studies, what he did...
I think he did.
For that intersection, and then it went out to fit, it got constructed. So, when traffic studies are, are required typically, is when there's an inherent problem that people are aware of relative to, to traffic flow in the, in the, not the overall region, but in the general area. So, the, the traffic points that would be studied would be, for example, Willard and Central, possibly Willard and, what's the word? Gitec, or the central, back of the central, those intersections there, the, the type of intersection that we've been studying for the past 20 years. So, a lot of the problems that were out there 20 years ago have been resolved, thanks to construction that's been done by MASTIOT.
And that's certainly, yeah, I'll get to, I'll get you a second. But that's, that's where, I wasn't involved in that decision, so I'm going to ask some of the other, but this, my background, what I had was, typically, you go back to, you look at the total number of homes in the area, and you say, okay, 24 homes against 500. Yeah, what's the percentage of impact? It's not that big, okay? No. Willard Street is a failing, thorough fail. And, but, subdivision regulations only are restricted to certain points. And I can't put a requirement, even if I came up with a traffic study, to say, you got to widen out Willard Street to 32 feet. The subdivision regulations do not allow me, and the state laws, to impose that requirement on a developer on a, on a city street that's, that's open, okay? So I have some restrictions. Now, on the, on the other hand, like, when I have special permits, like New England Development, that's a hots of a different color, okay? And then with special permits, now we can require them to do all 117, put in all new sewer lines, do, you know, a whole bunch of other things, but this is outside of that.
And, and I don't disagree, I mean, that, that other development was proposed, I think, in 2000, although they didn't build it out till many years later, and I think the traffic lights went in probably 2007. So it was definitely after the subdivision was proposed. You know, my concern is, the more traffic you put on Willard Street, you know, the more car trips you have every day, and there's very little room to pass on Willard, especially, you know, there's a telephone pole that, I mean, it's bad. And so you're going to have more cars having to pass each other going in opposite directions on Willard Street, but, you know, if through your expertise, you can't propose a traffic study, or, you know, make a developer make improvements, then, then we got to go talk to the mayor about that.
They have the city responsibility, you know, at some time it transfers to the city.
John, if I may...
Yeah, follow that, yes.
I lived there for 45 years.
Can you say your name, please, for the record?
My name is Frank Andrews. I live at 677 Willard Street. My property is the emergency exit road.
Okay.
I've been there for 45 years. I was the 10th house in the entire street. And over time, Casimi took up the gravel pit from Angles. Whitney took over the, the other side, across the street from me, to do the Crabtree. That was eight houses there. There's 74 down in the pit. Willard, further down, was developed with prefab big houses, modulars. Not too long ago, I was sitting in my, at my computer, between 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock, I counted 110 cars, and out of those 110 cars, 100 of them went over the double slot line right at Crabtree. Down the street, across from that road, is one of the biggest trees that you'll ever see in a...
I know where it is.
There's a branch that's sticking up over that tree, that a school bus and a car cannot pass, as they enter a lane. There has been tractor trailers have lost the whole side of their trailers, since there've been many of them. Nothing's been done. I complained to the DPW about it, I complained to my ward constor about it, we've had a site walk, I brought it up then, still nothing's been done about it. Somebody's going to get killed if somebody don't take care of that treatment that's hanging over that, over that tree, over that street, the whole tree.
Okay, yeah.
There's a couple trees that are actually leaning right over their, their entrance way of that new road.
Yep.
That's traffic. There's, your traffic analysis was done long before the gravel pit was ever developed. Most of that traffic is being routed through Gitec Park today. It's not going all the way down to, to, so, they cross, across, they go, cut across, and go out at the top. I do too, because it's easier to get onto Central Street than waiting at a light, when only two cars can go through the light when it turns green, before it turns red again. That's today.
Okay, that, that's the traffic.
That's today.
Yeah.
Two cars, boom. You're lucky you get through it. I've almost gotten hit twice, going out there on a red, on a green light, and somebody coming up Central Street.
Yep.
That's a hazard.
I, I agree with you. And I know, I, I agree.
And you're going to add, 27 more houses, two cars probably per, there's already 150 cars already been at it, and now you're going to add some more, and like they said before, there's places on Willard Street that cannot be widened, you have one house down the street that's got his cement barrier right on the edge of the road. And if you're not familiar with the road, you're going to run into it head-on.
Well, well, okay, that's, that's...
That's issues with the road.
That's enforcement, I don't know how to deal, I can't deal with that, yeah, okay? Because...
These are safety issues, John.
The minimum road width, right away, the minimum right away, even on Willard Street...
Yep.
Is 40 feet. Now, guaranteed, most of that is, most of the pavement is around 20.
They resurfaced it, oh, like, two, three years ago?
Well, yeah, they just resurfaced Willard Street, yeah. So, but they didn't do any reconstruction.
No.
Okay? And that's, like, again, that's a city issue, and I can't, I, I can't deal with that yet. I don't have...
It's not under the authority of the board.
It's not my authority.
No, I understand, but we're talking safety and, and traffic...
Right.
Studies and stuff like that, so I'm concerned as a resident who lives there, and got to travel on it. I also have a granddaughter that travel on that street. And there's small children on that street, a lot more than there was 45 years ago.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Lisa Profit, speaking for my sister, who lives at 664 Willard, the site walk was at Michaela's home. She submitted a letter at the last meeting, I just didn't know if you had time to read it, and with like, maybe some comments back from the board on what was...
We have to remember we have got the board.
What was in it, and...
We did it last time.
Yeah.
She gave it to us at the last meeting.
Last meeting.
We had it in the meeting.
Did we continue it at the last meeting?
We did, but we accepted this...
Yeah, there was no, there was no meeting that I gave you...
There's no meeting, but we just...
We couldn't discuss it.
We couldn't discuss it, all we could do was take a...
So, with regard to Mr. Andrews' point, I know that you can't do anything with Willard, understood and we agree. However, we do think that you do have the authority to ask the developer to move the road towards the widest end of his development, which is toward the Crabtree edge. We know it doesn't line up perfectly, we understand that it probably doesn't meet the subdivision control laws of being 125 feet away, we understand that. However, in the interest of safety on that road, it is the best location for that entry way. We know logistically that there are issues, we know there's a house that is there currently, we understand all those things, but we, we still think that, from an engineering perspective, it is possible, and it is something that could be done if this board had the will to make that happen. Willard at, yeah, Willard at Crabtree, I think the paved road that they had was 31 feet in width. As you get down to where their entry currently is, the paved road goes down to about 20. So it's a significant difference. There's a nice concrete sidewalk on the corner of Crabtree where that development was, and where the bus stop is, wider swath, it's a safer path, it's brighter, it's, you know, bus plows the whole nine yards. The board witnessed it for those that were there, and I know that this is kind of at the end of where everybody wants to see this, but we've been discussing the same issue since March, and every meeting has either been canceled, or the issue's being ignored, and other things come up like over the grid, or this, or that grade. And from an engineering perspective, I just think that those things aren't relevant. I think the easement is quite far away. In fact, there's another house there that's actually closer to the national grid easement than where the road would be. And I think the grading, if you really look at it, is almost identical to where the road is now. So, you know, is there some tweaking that needs to happen? Sure. But is it possible? Yes. They already are requesting a waiver because there's not two means of egress, which according to subdivision control laws, is necessary for more than a 12-lot subdivision. So there's already a waiver on your part that's going to take place for this development. So I think, you know, a tit-for-tat could be implemented here to say, well, if we're going to waive you this, and you're only going to have one entrance, then you're going to put the road in the safest place, not just for the people who live there, but the people who travel there. And we've been asking for this since the site walk in March. We know that you don't own the land that's directly across from Crabtree, we understand that, but if you did move it, logistically, you could make it happen, even if you needed to use the road that they're proposing to build the development, because we understand that there's a house there, and, you know, those nice people are going to get a house on the, on the inside, and that would have to be demolished at some point. They could use the other road to build it, and then they could, they could make the entry as their last operation when they build that house for those people. Or, or, that house gets eliminated completely, like we talked about, and, you know, those nice folks could get another house. At the meeting in May, you talked at length about density. You talked that you didn't like how it was situated... You talked that you didn't like how it was situated. Maybe you don't have any authority to change that. But we talked at length about the road. We talked at length about density. And then June was canceled, July was canceled, and in August, it was completely ignored. And so that's, um, the gist of our letter. And we'd just like a response as to your thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't ignore it, by the way.
Thank you.
We feel the same way as you do. Yeah, we've been asking for the same things. And here we are again. So, we're waiting to hear what the developer has to say and then we'll go from there 'cause that comment's not necessarily out yet.
If I may, I own the lot next to where the road is going. It's an open lot. I plan to build it. I got copies for you, so you can actually see. I plan to build it in four, two thousand fourteen, but due to illness, I had to flip the whole thing on hold. So, I propose, if they want, if you need to get directly across the Crab Tree, I'm willing to make a deal.
Well, that's between you and the developer.
No, I'm just saying, well, we're, I'm trying to at least, um-
We talked, we talked about all of this. And actually, we would've been done with this months ago had this one thing been switched. It would, I, I know. But months ago, we've caught, you know, this has cost the development three, four months of time. Doesn't bother us. But we've talked over and over and over about this. I know, I know. You were there, you know. When we did the sidewalk, we were all sitting there saying, if they only did this, the rest would be acceptable. We could work with the rest and, and figure out what was going on there. Now, I don't know what the stubbornness is. I don't know what the issues are outside. We still wanna hear. But the pro, you know, this could've all been dissolved months ago. Time is money, not for us. We just get old and gray. Time is money. So, we'd like to hear what, why you can't do this now.
We've, we've talked about that in a couple of meetings.
Well-
And the, the request that was made at the site visit was that we move the road so it didn't shine the headlights into the house across the street.
But it wasn't just for that.
The mayor.
I was there.
Okay. So, what we did was we moved it so that it would be, without asking for another waiver, so that it would be along the property line between the two properties, which made a lot of sense.
If I may-
We did take a look at, if I may-
Now, let, now let him speak.
We did take a look at moving it further down. Um, and the configuration was, and I'll let Chris speak to this more, but the grading just didn't work as well as it does now. Okay? So, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things-
There's not a lot of difference. I'd like to know where the difference is 'cause there's not a lot of difference in the grading. No. And, and you know, the other thing I still contend on this whole thing is, you can't tell, you know, to me, it's a cul-de-sac. How long from the entrance road to the end of the cul-de-sac? How long is that? You know, if you go the loop, not take the other road up? If you go the other road-
You can't ignore the other road, though, Sal. The other road-
Let me finish, Bill. How long is that?
The long road that loops through is approximately fifteen hundred and fifty feet long.
That's almost three times longer than a normal cul-de-sac. And I know what you're saying, Bill, you can't ignore the other road. The other road could be a cul-de-sac because it's probably less. It's about eight hundred feet, maybe? If you just went the other road to the end of cul-de-sac? How much is that?
You're looking at, it's still about a hundred feet.
So, we're, even if you took the other road into consideration, I think it's still in default because you don't meet the, you know, you don't meet the length of a cul-de-sac. And here we are, still discussing this and allowing this to happen because we didn't like the, you know, the boulevard, uh, cut through or how we're gonna set it up originally from the very preliminary designs. And all we asked at the sidewalk, if you could do this one thing, we were gonna be pretty good with that. I just don't get it. 'Cause you know the tree, you know the road, you know those corners. I know that street intricately. I grew up in that area, too. I just have some real problems with that. I don't see that much of a difference in putting the roadway in that location versus the access road. You're still gonna have to grade it for the access road.
Is the, is the, is the issue-
Sure. What?
Is the issue with respect to the road, is it because of the fact that Willard Street narrows in that location?
It's just such a bad spot. We as planners are supposed to look at the safety and overall-
I understand that. So, the question would be, then be, if we approached the DPW and worked with them on coming up with a way of widening the road in that location without moving the road, wouldn't that accomplish the same thing?
Yeah, we'd have to see that, though. We'd have to see that. If you could push it out another ten, twenty feet, well, you're gonna need to add the twelve feet to it.
It's still coming out of there and they confess to wanting to will it. People coming out of crappy-
You got just so much commotion going on and over there.
And they're so close to one another. It just looks like it's gonna add trouble for no-
And why are we creating trouble when we can do this thing and make it easy? I, I don't get it. I just don't get it. I, I might be old school, but I just don't get it. Because of the arrogance of some person or another person or because we might have one less house. I think you already lost the cost of one less house in delays, three, four months here over one issue. That's my thought on the whole thing. And I've been, I've been right up with this the whole way. I've said the same things for six months now. And I, I see nothing different here. And, and that bothers me. I just, it can't be done, or the grading's different. I don't know about that. Uh, you know, if you told me, you know, we got ledge in here, we have to blast for, you know, a month to get through the ledge or if you had sewer issues or water design issues, then, you know, you got me thinking. But I don't like it. It's just my opinion. I still don't like it. All right, I'm done with that one. You must say something. It's the same thing every time we meet.
Okay.
I just have one more thing I'd like to bring up, please. Two meetings ago, there was a gentleman here speaking on behalf of his grandson, the one that owns the house to the right of Main Road. And they talked about putting up a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't hear that mentioned when he was going over his notes. If nothing's gonna change with the design as far as that, uh, emergency road, I highlighted my property line and that's why I wanted to show you that. I'd like to request a six-foot fence between my land and the emergency road because I do wanna build there. And, um, I put in a road that may or may not ever be used, but over time, you know it and I know it, that road's gonna be used. And, uh, I'd like to have some privacy between that road and my lawn. Obviously, I don't wanna make it noted. If you're gonna put a white fence on the other side, I'd like to have a fence on this side.
White? White, blue, purple. If I may, through the chair.
Go ahead.
I believe, and I, I, and the yield of Chris on this one relative, I thought that we had talked about not putting a fence over there, but putting plantings.
So, speak to the lawyers. Sir, I did not bring, include this in my original review or everything, but there are, there's very little existing vegetation in there. What is there now is probably small, tall, uh, medium-high in scrub brush. So, additional notations have been put onto the plan saying that additional infill plantings as needed. Once you get in there and you start kind of things down, you're gonna have a much better idea what's going on. Will be placed within a twenty-foot buffer zone along the entire property line. Relative to the access path being used, highly unlikely. Uh, there will be two barges put on either side of this, uh, access road. So, if somebody's going through there, they're having bigger issues because now their car's destroyed. So, there is a limiting factor in this access road. Again, there's very low vegetation in this area, too.
And, and through the chair, the developers agreed that she would put arbivores along that property line. So, the property line on the left-hand side of the-
Right.
emergency access, there would be a row of arbivores for screening. And on the right side of the first block, on the right-hand side, there'd be infill plantings as needed to create screening as well. And that's what's something that was created before.
Okay, John. Please. Do we have anything else? Yes.
Ed Hyman, seventy-two, Lincoln Drive, Lake Stanisat Association. What I'm interested to know is, does the omission of Exhibit B in the homeowner covenants affect those covenants?
No, Exhibit C is the operation maintenance.
I know what it is, but it isn't there.
Yeah, we submit to the attorney for them.
I, I know, but the version that I've seen and the version, unless you have a different version, the version that I've seen is Exhibit B, the operations and maintenance plan for the stormwater system is not there. It's a blank sheet. It doesn't provide it. We wanted to see that. We wanted to comment on it. I have asked for it repeatedly to try and get that final homeowner covenant. The covenant looks fine. But that is a particularly key document that is not in the, in the covenants. And the covenants say very specifically that that, the covenants include that. And how can they include something that isn't there?
I, I don't know why that's not in there. I got it, I got it back to the attorney and emailed it to Elizabeth. And I presume that-
And I forwarded it, too.
Right, and it's not there.
But I know the document exists because I have it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not-
You have-
I have the, this is the operation maintenance agreement or, uh, plan.
Okay.
So, I know it exists. And I know the attorneys have seen it because they asked for it specifically.
Okay.
So-
So, it's just missing from his copy?
Well, it's missing, might be missing from city copy, is what I think he's saying.
I think it's missing from your copy. So, can you approve something that's omitted?
Well, he's got a, we have a copy of it.
I have the file here, so we can check.
Yeah.
Do you have the date?
As far as I know, I've been requesting it that it doesn't exist. So, how can you approve a plan that's incomplete?
The operation maintenance plan must comply with the possibility.
I, I've seen it now.
It's also included with the-
Conservation Commission, yeah.
It's also included-
I'm not talking about the Conservation Commission. I'm talking about the homeowner agreement. The homeowner agreement specifically says that Exhibit B is part of it. The homeowner agreement, the covenants do not have it. You've got a blank sheet there. It just says at the top, stormwater operations and maintenance plan, and it's blank.
It hasn't been intentionally, it hasn't been intentionally not disclosed to you, obviously.
I've asked for it over and over again.
Well, but you're making it sound like we're not disposing it to you intentionally.
I'm not saying that. I'm asking you, can you-
He's saying it's not saying it.
Can you, can you approve it if it doesn't have it?
Yeah, let's, let's-
That's my question. Can you approve it if it doesn't have it?
Well, it doesn't sound like we're approving anything tonight after Sal's diatribe.
That's true. I'll just check the copy that I sent over from the attorneys.
You're not. You're not.
But if it's non-included, yes, we need to include it.
I'm gonna give you a point. I'm gonna say something right at this point, okay? I'm taking a sense from my board, okay? That this project is gonna be rejected. The sense I have is they want that road moved. You either move the road, you don't get the project. I'm trying to get as simple as I can. That's the input that I feel that I'm getting from my members. Okay? Now, what do we have to do to move the roads so that it lines up?
Doesn't have to line up, it just handles your line.
To get a better configuration than we have today. The configuration we have today is not right. It has not been right. We asked for it, it's been delayed. So, at this point, I'm gonna ask that we take it. Continue again. Because if I take a vote right now, it's going down. That's my sense.
We need a letter?
Elizabeth.
Sure. I just wanna point out, and we need to take this into consideration, that this meeting has been continued. The fir, the first meeting that it was held was-
That's right.
March fourth. There are certain laws that come into place. For example, a board member cannot miss more than two meetings.
That's right.
I, I'd have to go back through the minutes and determine unless we know from memory. I know Tom is out today. I know Carol missed one.
I don't think I've ever missed one. I think it's been continued if I-
Okay, a member is allowed to miss one meeting. If a member misses two meetings, that member cannot vote on the project. So, I think we're running up against that law. If that happens, the meeting can no longer be continued. The meeting applicant is required to submit an entirely new application and start from the beginning.
I signed the affidavit, reviewed all the information. So, as a matter of fact, as long as the information was reviewed and you signed an affidavit, the meeting will be-
Sal, I think you missed one, you're fine.
No, no, but I understood. But if somebody signed an affidavit that missed two, saying that they-
They can't miss two.
They can't miss-
It's a, it's a standalone.
I don't think anybody's missed two on this. Well, it's seven majority.
The only one that missed two is Nick.
Yeah.
So, you're out. Tom's missed one.
But he isn't gonna vote anyway.
Sal's missed one.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as that's clear. I'm screwed.
Yep, good.
So we're under the gun, okay?
They could just try to outlast us by having somebody missing on the meeting.
No, because we got, because right now, I'm at the point where I'm at the... No, don't go here.
No, no, I know.
Close the hearing, and then we'll have a discussion to vote. And there'll be no more continuances.
That's right.
Okay?
Or a continuance.
And that's where we stand. I feel we stand tonight.
So we would request a continuance, okay? And I would say that we would need more than just one meeting continuance to try to work this out with DPW. I think that that's our group. We have to talk to DPW about how they would like us to approach this. I know the desire of the board may be to move the road, but maybe they can work out something with the DPW relative additional offset improvements to the street that would be voluntary, not required.
Come back with an alternate plan of what you have today.
Yeah.
To do something with Willard Street.
You know we're open to that stuff, but...
The Willard Street, and it's gonna be changed. Something's gonna happen.
Especially there, because you...
But she was absolutely right. From the first meeting I came in here to know, the basic thing hasn't changed.
So we request a continuance to the first meeting in November.
I'm good.
Oh. Might I suggest that the second meeting in November might work back?
When's the date on the second meeting?
November 18.
I will not be here.
And I will be here on the fourth.
Wait a minute. December 2nd is the next one.
You have a missed one, so that...
Paul, goodness, one.
I won't be here December 2nd. Sorry.
Yeah, but that's okay. It's okay, because you haven't missed one of these.
But we still have to have a board.
Tom is hopefully coming back.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can anyone make the next meeting? Because what we could do is try to at least have a concept plan for the change, having worked out all the details without redrawing all the plans. And then from there, if it's acceptable to the board, we would then make those changes.
I'm coming over. So first, in the Senate, right?
First, I've watched...
No, the next meeting.
What time?
October 21st. Okay, I just have to count back on the calendar because staff needs time to do your, the applicants do justice and the board justice by writing updated staff reports. So today is the 7th. Let me pull up the calendar.
14 days.
I, just based on staffing and what we have coming down the pipeline and what we have, just to be honest with you, one of the vows I take when I take my AICP certification, professional planning certifications, I never accept them if something, if I can't meet the deadline. I just want to be honest with you. I'm...
We're not gonna, we're not gonna break...
I would need it by...
We're not gonna be bringing in entire site. We're gonna be bringing in concept plans for...
A new role layout.
Can you get something in by the 15th at 4:00? Or 16th at 8:00 in the morning?
Yes. All right.
Wait, the packets have to go out to the board?
Would you ever do this anyway?
I don't think so.
You think Friday, the 11th is better?
We will.
Yeah, every other applicant just do Friday, the 11th.
That's next Friday.
That's next Friday. I'm personally out of the office, so it's not...
Well, I think I can do that, because what I want to do is go meet with DPW, go up to Willard Street and take a look.
Set something.
So we'll set the 11th at what?
This Friday.
How, let's do noon? Can we do noon, 1:01? Or would you rather have 4:00?
Since I haven't talked to anybody at DPW, and that's this Friday...
It would need to be stamped in by the clerk, because I'm not gonna have any staff covering it.
I understand. So I would prefer 4:00, because that's the only game.
All right. We can do that. You'll just have to stamp it in, stamp it in with the clerk, and leave it with, it will be Stephanie, it will be myself. I believe it'll be Ellen Racine if she's in.
You have some, Carol?
No.
I don't. Yes, ma'am. Make a shot, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. I think the agreement from the board is that to utilize the existing intersection at Crabtree is preferable. So if they come back to clear cut Lillard from end to end is not your preference.
We don't know. I can't say that. They're gonna come back with an alternate plan, okay?
We've been waiting on an alternate plan for so much so.
No, okay. Don't give me stipulations.
No, I'm just asking.
We're gonna get a, we're gonna get a new plan.
Okay.
Okay? Let us work it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll get your letter of continuance from me this week.
And you'll get your copy.
We've done time.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, when's the meeting?
Our next meeting was scheduled...
October 18th.
October 21st.
What time?
October 21st.
October 21st. We have Mary Avenue, yeah, we have Mary Avenue extension at 6:30 PM. So it has to be at 6:45.
Yes.
Continue 6:45 on October 21st?
21st.
October 21st.
We have a motion.
Say, will you say aye?
Aye.
Will you say no?
No, Carol.
So we'll have a chance to see that before.
If you come into the office, you'll be able to see it.
I will be there. It's a holiday on Monday.
Can you get that copy of that?
Stephanie will be here on Tuesday.
I can give you the one I have.
There's a holiday on Monday.
Make sure, well, give it to the...
I'll give it to the head. I'll email you a copy of this.
Stephanie will get it to him today.
Yes, yes.
That's all I wanted to do.
You can send it to me, and I'll forward it.
Yes.
I think it's already...
Just send me an email reminding me to give it to you.
Yeah, I want a more one.
Can we move on, please?
I'm too busy.
Thank you.
Okay. Six forty-five hearing. Open public meeting for site-wide approval for 31 Fuller Street. Just to let you, I made a decision on this with a request from the mayor that we schedule this.
That's fine. It's fine.
Okay. So I just want to let you know it's that. I'll let that representative come forward and make their presentation.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to let the board know that at 2:00 today, you were emailing the director's report from planning. Prior to that, you were, you received all department head comments, and then you have a paper copy of my report from January. And I believe we have city staff here also.
Stand up then, please.
My name is Arthur Hoffman. I'm with Technical Rights Company. Technor is a compounder of plastics. Basically, we take two different materials, blend them together, and extrude them, and dice them, and that product goes out the door to the tusk. What we're asking for is approval, expedited approval, for a 7,000, 73,200 square foot warehouse. We already have a facility in place, and it's on 31 Fuller Street. That street is entirely dedicated or comprised of one occupant, and that would be Technical Rights Company. This addition would be on the back end of our existing warehouse and also combination production facility, okay? The entire area, the entire lot that we have, is primarily surrounded by trees. On the back end, what you have is a wetlands area, okay? On the other side, so far we've covered two sides, is another industrial facility, okay? I believe that's modern, modern dispersion. And then we have the front end, which is basically Marguerite Street. So if you've ever been down our road, or even Marguerite Street, you can see it's not primarily, it is an industrial zone area. And our area is completely isolated from even Marguerite Street, okay? So has anyone ever been down 31 Fuller Street before?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the area. There's not much more for me to say. I did bring Google Maps to give you an idea of where they are. And what we're talking about is adding, adding that area to the back of this building, okay?
Is there a land behind that?
Well, there is a sample, right, Ed?
Yeah, just so you can show.
We have a GIS, okay? I have additional maps, and you also have drawings from the proposed facility. And this, this is the area where we have production and warehousing. And then we expect to extend this about 200 feet along the full width of the building, minus about five feet, so that we maintain setbacks by ordinance.
Are you gonna have additional bays on that, trailer bays?
Yeah.
Are there gonna be additional trailer bays on that for that?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I don't, didn't want to open this big thing up.
No, that's okay. I'll explain later. So on this end, on this end of the proposed facility, I believe we have six dock doors now, and we intend to add one more dock door that would basically hold up to grade. So the answer to your question is, yeah, it will be, we already have bays, but that would be covered up.
These smaller drawings next time. These are way too big.
I'm actually hoping there isn't a next tax.
Yeah, I know. No, if you have, you know, do more business, then another time.
Yeah.
All right, so the front of the shared area is what you're adding? That's correct. And all this does is show, it shows that we maintain the required distance to a stream, within the required distance to wetlands, okay?
Now, when I, when I look at this, is this, this road here, this is all gonna be paved? Now, are you gonna have additional parking back in here? And is there gonna be, is this totally closed? Are you gonna, gonna have any docks back there?
So the docks are along this side, okay?
Okay.
This one is a proposed expansion beyond what we're requesting here, but we've eliminated that entirely. So we're down to only a request for this, this building, and I've already had the drawings modified by Venish, so they're up to date, okay? And it includes the change that was requested by the DPW, so that we didn't go over a, during an achievement. So we're covered on that.
Was there a...
Yes.
So let me, let me answer the parking issue. We have parking. We have sufficient parking for the number of people that we have on the site, the number of visitors that we have. We've already submitted what we have, and it was considered adequate for the site. We are expecting to add seven more employees as a consequence of this proposal, okay? That would be to man the warehouse. Five of those employees would be coming in from Clinton. Two would be new, new employees, okay? So what we're doing is we're consolidating operations. We're taking business from the leased building that we have in Clinton, and we're moving it into Leavenster, okay?
Okay.
So there's a number of good reasons for that. You can guess as to what they are. We don't have to move product to Clinton, and then at times move it back to Leavenster because it might have to be modified. So overall, we're cutting down on the number of trucking operations that would be entailed with this facility.
So how many proposed parking spaces?
Zero. We're proposing zero additional parking spaces.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So anything...
So you have 73.
We have 73. That's correct. Seventy-three divided by three would give us what we, you know, would give the mandatory requirement by ordinance.
So you...
As I understand it, the warehouse, the warehouse is one per 10 houses.
That's correct, right.
Yeah, so John, if I can...
Yeah, go ahead.
The only department head comment was about sprinklers and fire alarms. Are you, do you have that somewhere?
I didn't have that. Either I overlooked that, or I didn't get that question. But maybe I can answer that question right now. What was the...
Fire department access around building required?
Sprinkler and fire alarm.
And then sprinkler and fire alarm plans.
Okay. We do have fire, we have about 60-foot access along three sides. And on one side, I believe we have about 25, 25-foot access. That would be the setback required for this facility. So we do have it all the way around. If we had 60 feet on the 25-foot side, then this would be an unlimited building, and it causes, you understand what I'm saying?
And you've addressed the DPW's concern about building over the utilities?
Yes, I have. This, this is the area where you...
Addition and addition.
This is the proposed addition beyond this one. That's been incorporated with the current drawings.
I'm sorry, just the sprinkler and fire alarm plans? Do you have sprinkler and fire alarm plans?
We don't have those developed as of this time.
We can...
Yeah, but that's, that's conditional. But the question I have is, in this area, I have a problem with the travel, okay? You're showing the, you know, proposed, that's fine, that can go out there. But you're not showing the docks back here, and, and you paved with or you, you traveled way for those docks.
Are those on a new plan that you said you had?
No.
No, no, not yet, John.
I didn't bring all the drawings that are available. I believe one of those ones should have that access, but I could explain what it is.
Not that I could find.
Yeah, well, we do have it. But if you look at, if you look at this one, for instance, it shows how the stormwater is controlled.
That's the stormwater, right.
That's stormwater. So if you look at Fuller Street, this street would be extended, and then here would be the loading dock area. So the trucks would pull in, back up, and then they'd pull back out onto Fuller Street.
They don't go out the building.
You're not showing that.
What he's, what John's asking is, do you have a set of plans that incorporates the, you know, the traveled route around the building, and shows the footage, and also the loading docks?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Do we have a copy of that?
I think, I thought you had a copy. It's possible you do not have a copy, but we do have a copy.
What sheet, do you know what sheet it's on?
What we have is the one that had the other proposed building that you had said you took off.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, I believe that if you look, if you look at this, this would be the closest to what you're asking.
That's probably the closest there, but it, it shows me a square for a building.
This would be the edge of the pavement, correct? This is the edge, overall edge of the pavement. This is Fuller Street, and the loading docks would be...
Well, Fuller Street starts right there. That's already a closed parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay?
What they're asking for is, we need, we need to have plans on file that show the, you know, two dimensional widths on the roadway that they're gonna create.
Turnarounds.
Fuller Street, the turnarounds.
I could provide all those.
And then the loading docks.
Right. I have that. I could provide them. As I understood this meeting, it would basically show a plan of what we intended to do, how we intended to control drainage, whether or not we needed parking. So that was one that I did not include, and I'm sorry about that. But I will, I will send it to the entire board.
Well, you can send it to Elizabeth. We'll get it.
Okay, then I'll send it to Elizabeth.
And we're trying to work with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we have, we have a set of requirements that we take, and we try to follow everybody, okay? And, and, and try to head things off in the future. We say, okay, we want to, because we've had problems in the past with traffic and snow storage and things like that. And with this change, you don't show, I mean, that's like another requirement that we have, is to show, yeah, you got plenty of land. That's not a, that's not an issue. But it's still, it's an issue in our eyes, because it's not shown on the drawing anywhere where there's any snowstorm.
Yeah, we just need to revise the plans that show both dimensions, right? You have it already.
Yes.
The loading docks.
I can provide those tomorrow.
The setbacks. The snow, snow storage areas. You should note, note the snow storage areas.
I will, yeah. So we, you want a set of plans that shows the loading docks, exactly how you...
You travel, see, one of the things is, the problem that we've had in the past with companies coming, is their turning radiuses, especially when you get into the bigger semis, and making sure that, and then like, you've got this, this unit, this house, or this, this building in the back, it looks like it's a lab or something. I don't see it. It's a very lab-backed building. Now, is somebody working that building?
In the lab building?
Is that the lab building right here?
No, no, that's, that building is...
I don't know what that is.
That building is used for storage. It used to be part of the stormwater and wastewater creation.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't been, I haven't seen that building. So I'm looking at a building there, and I'm saying, okay, there's somebody working that, because I don't see any parking in that area.
No, no, no.
And if there's parking there, then that affects your turning radiuses and stuff like that.
There is no...
There's nothing, okay.
There's no occupants in that facility, in that building.
Okay.
And in the front, in the front of our lot, we have two buildings that where there are no occupants.
Okay.
Parking, but no occupants.
No, I look at your parking. I was there today. Now, look at your parking. You don't have a problem with parking, I think. We're just trying to get this so that we can...
This one will be...
There's certain regulations that we know that, that it's done consistently with our subdivision regulations. What you've done here with your drainage calculations, what I, what I see with your, everything else looks, looks, looks good to me. And the way you're gonna treat all that drainage is, I think it's like, it's this whole thing of travel ways and parking and like Fuller Street. So are you gonna be taking out these siding then? Because there's a railroad siding that comes in there.
There is a railroad siding. That railroad siding was, the right-of-way was given to the occupant, to the owner of that, which is Dispersion, by DSM, which is the former company that owned this project.
Okay.
And we have purchased that right-of-way from, back from DSM. So the paperwork from there for that is already there.
Okay. Because I know there's a lot of history with railroad sightings here, and it's always a stumbling block.
Yeah, it was also, when we did the, when we did the code review, the architect brought that up, okay? So he showed us what the law was, and the law specifically states if that siding has been leased or owned by a railroad, then it would have to comply with the regulations. The only owners of that siding have been private owners.
Been private owners. Yeah, see, I don't know that by looking at it, you know?
Right. But I'm telling you, that's the case. And we've submitted all the documentation to show that there.
Okay, fine.
So just a few points. I think we can just make everything conditional on that.
Okay.
We can make that conditional, yeah.
And we need snow, snow storage as well.
Yes.
So loading docks, traveled way, dimensions, sprinklers, and the plan for the right-of-way, because they'll need to see the specs on the additional road there, and so...
I don't want to put myself in any hot water. It looks like things are going well, but I got a number of requests or objections, with all with respect to parking, by the way. A few of them were dimensional issues or scale issues that are called for by the owners. But since we're not asking for additional parking, then I'm assuming that we wouldn't have to combine a tree for every, I don't know how many, how many, one tree every 10, one tree every three, and islands. I'm not asking for additional parking.
Now, you qualify, you're, when your current parking is grandfathered, what you have there. We're not looking for the changes. We're not looking for the change thing. Not even to just, if the current building leaves, some of our control, you know, some of the... know, some of the, just so that we know and that we're satisfied with that, that things are taken care of.
Yep.
That there is parking and that, I mean, that, you know, you showed a parking, there's a sketch of a parking plan, but that's, it's just there.
Look at the parking. Did you see it already on the drawing? Because those two front buildings and revenue, you still own that property?
Yeah, we still own that.
And that's, it's still parked inside the building. We're good.
And that's all gated, so they're not going to get back there anyway.
Yeah.
We're making motion to close the hearing.
Yeah.
Make motion to close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
So we might vote on it.
And we'll have conditions.
So hang around. Do you have any more questions?
Nope.
I believe we have city staff here that may want to speak before they're ready to disclose. I'm not sure.
I get the, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Sorry, John.
Do I have anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of this project?
I would...
Go ahead. That's the old guys.
That's true, right here.
This is a project that we've been working on.
Just state your name for the...
Sure. Nikki Peters, Economic Development for the City of Homestore. This is a project we've been working on with them for quite a while. They have been leasing space in Clinton. Obviously seventy-three thousand square feet of space. We want to take that business and add it here in Homestore. It does add some more jobs. They've been a great part of our commu-, business community here and hopefully, you know, with an approval for this to move forward, it'll just continue further in the relationship here.
I think that's all in there. Just like to speak in favor of it. Back when this was PoliSARS locally owned and operated and then it morphed into another operation which got sold. Then after Novocor went in there, we were worried about what Novocor was going to do. They ended up leaving town. We're lucky to have a business to go back in there. It's, it's pretty much all high-level, you know, chemists and engineers. They really built a competitive business, separated themselves from their competition and they've been growing slowly, but more recently even more rapidly. And one of the things that's happening in town now, and I'm sure you've heard this, is, is people running out of places to store to have any kind of warehouse. So lean, lean manufacturing, very efficient operations, technology, but then at the other end of the, the food chat is, is there's no place to warehouse anything anymore. Almost all the space in town is filled. Jimmy's building's all full. All the old mills are full. They've either been redeveloped into housing or there's small incubator space. So we run into this, you know, the last mile, where do you take your goods when they're finished? And we're waiting for them to be, you know, warehoused so that they can, you know, sometimes be, you know, delivered later on as a group. In their case, it's probably supplies that have been, you know, as they purchased their supplies and then finished products. So this fits perfect, you know, with the plan to allow them to expand. And if you remember when Novocor was here, Novocor got to a certain point, then they were going to put up a new building, they were going to expand, and then things were a little bit slow for them, you know, with their relationship with the city, and they just packed up and left. And so, you know, this, this is a company that's really invested. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing. I know this came in late. I know it was a little bit rushed. Maybe we're working a little harder, but at the end of the day, it's really accommodating them as they move their product back and forth to Clinton. And, you know, we do that a few times a day and, you know, that's, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have a motion in a second?
I have a motion in a second to, to close the hearing. Do I have any further discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye. Both say no. Motion carries.
I make, I make a motion to, to advance to six point four.
Second.
Yeah, want to do five point one?
Do you want to get these guys? Yes.
All right.
So amendment to that?
Motion denied.
All right.
There's no, there's no second.
I make a motion to advance to five point one.
Five point one.
Second.
Motion made in second to move to five point one.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I can't. I can open the meeting.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Sorry about that. Open the regular meeting. Call it auto.
Patrick Corla.
Here.
Fred Fergrex.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser. Savator Trapani.
Yeah.
John Suzo.
Yeah.
Carl Vittoriosa.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan. Excuse.
I make a motion to advance to five point one.
Second.
Motion made in second to move to five point one. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Five point one is on the site.
And make a motion to approve for the issuance of, of a site plan on the condition that he meets all department head, that they meet all department head comments and he submits a new plan showing a parking sto-, snow storage.
No, it's detailed road information plus the loading docks plus the storm water.
That's it.
No, so... So, okay, and that would be south side.
And the sprinkler system.
Oh, yes. Oh, well, that's the department head.
So are there any department comments from the ten-seven memo that you, I said you went two o'clock, I was in your bucket, from, from myself?
Yeah, fire.
No, that's...
The report that you just got at two o'clock today, are there any that you don't want me, want?
No.
No, all of them are good.
But you, you just said during the meeting that some of the landscaping requirements for grandfathered, that you would waive them. I mean, typically what you, the applicant would do would be to write a written request for a waiver from certain provisions and then they would be waived because they're grandfathered. For example, the landscaping.
But if they're grandfathered, do we have to waive them?
Well, they, not really grandfathered because they triggered, you're saying that, but they triggered a site plan of verbal.
They triggered a site plan because of the size.
With the condition that we request a waiver for...
They, just a simple written waiver request would suffice. Or maybe we can do a verbal one with knowing that a written waiver request will be worth having?
I don't, well, I don't know. I mean, if...
There's a lot of...
Because they have a site plan not for parking. They have a site plan because of the, because of the size of it.
So they wouldn't have to ask for waivers on that because parking was needed after. So they wouldn't need that waiver. I, no, I haven't. But I believe what I just said was correct. Landscaping, stormwater runoff, he has, well, the rest of the stuff, no, but the landscaping is, but the other stuff should all be on, must he submit it with the new plan. But it's not right. He's going to submit that new plan.
Right.
Right.
See, you want the parking.
And he's going to add buddy properties right within three hundred feet of the site location on the plan.
Did he get a copy of this? Do you have a copy of this memo from Elizabeth?
I did get a copy of it and I considered about ninety percent of it to do with parking and the rest of it really had to do with things like scale or the fact that the drawing wasn't, all the drawings were not stamped by the B E.
Right, yep, yep.
But we, unless there's a provision that would require us to go ahead and modify our existing parking scenario, then I don't see why we'd have to have a waiver if we're not requesting.
Why don't we just, why don't we just give, why don't we just make it a waiver? It'll be easier that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And to determine whether or not the landscaping qualifies, so...
Yep.
So you want a waiver from section twenty-two dash fifty-eight point five?
Yeah, the numbers one and two on your, on your, on your outline.
Okay.
All right. So let's, I, we have to, let's take, let's take the vote on the approval and then, even though we usually do the waivers first, but it's already on the table.
Yes, is there stuff on the handicap parking lot?
Well, we've got, no, like Carol said, we already have a motion to approve this based on department head review based on a revised set of plans and structural specifications for the new road being built, the loading docks, snow storage, and we want the dumpster location on that as well?
Y-yes.
And the dumpster location. So that should come with the new drawings. So we have that motion on the table, then we'll vote on waivers.
Okay.
Right?
So that's fine. Okay.
Yep. You're good with that?
Okay, this...
So I seconded it already. Carol moved it. I just was reiterating.
We have a motion made and seconded. Okay. Any further discussion on that?
No.
Just for the record, just to make it easier, because then, and then I'll do it, so we're going to, this is on the condition of all department head comments, including the planning, except for sections one and two under landscaping.
Correct.
Let's do it that way. And then we'll do the...
Okay.
Yep.
Reports.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to waive any landscaping requirements under the, our ordinance on site plans?
Any landscaping or any parking?
Well, no, she's, because we're not submitting a parking. It's just the landscaping. I mean, those are two sections, one, two, so...
Do you mean to detail the sections cited?
Yeah, so we're waiving section twenty-two dash fifty-eight point five and twenty-two dash fifty-two point eight. Upon a written request for the waiver as well.
So you'll have to give us a written request.
An email is fine. It's a simple email.
Elizabeth will help it.
I'm seconded.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to waive landscaping. Any further discussion?
No.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Okay.
Good luck.
To accept the project as amended. Motion is in order?
We already did that.
No, you got, you did the motion for individual landscaping.
No, no, we did that.
Oh, yeah, so you did that prior. Okay, we're all set.
So I move, I make a motion to advance to six point four.
Second.
Six point four.
Have you guys?
Procedure for public hearing for some of the states, we'll get hills.
Thank you.
Chair, do you want a briefing?
Okay.
Yep.
No briefing?
Yes, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Chair, if I may, the, just in summary of what occurred, most of the board members were here, but just in case, the applicant came to staff asking to develop one, the some estates subdivision project, and that was presented to the board. And we had a couple of meetings on this and it was decided at a previous meeting that the applicant was to come to a public hearing on November fourth. But in preparation of that, I, I prepared a member, memo dated August thirteenth detailing all of the items in the files at City Hall, some of which were incomplete and that's the fault of my department. So it's my fault that I don't have those documents. And so I had a meeting with Mr. Rowe, Jamie Rowe, who's in the audience, and I had a meeting with John Roseberry. And Mr. Rowe produced some of the documents that were missing from the city. And then I encouraged him to write a follow-up memo responding to my August thirteenth memo, basically updating the board on what items had, were now, now included as part of the file. And then John Roseberry from DPW had mentioned in their comments dated October seventh, we got them this morning, that I emailed to you, but are also printed in our copy in front of you, basically piggybacking on what is required from their department. So I believe we have representatives here that would provide more detail to the board.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. So I'll add to that summary a little bit, if you don't mind. I received the memo from Elizabeth, the memo that was dated...
August thirteenth.
From August thirteenth. And I came to that next planning board meeting with Mr. Exares and we had a conversation with the board. And at the end of that meeting, the board instructed Elizabeth and myself to get together and fill in the blanks so to, get all the documents, find out what's missing and then come up with a game can to supply those documents to the planning department because they're missing. And so that was my mission. After that meeting, a few days later, I called Elizabeth and I said, let's schedule this meeting, let me know when it is. And we just had that meeting last week, right? So that, that's fantastic that happened. I know what's missing. I supplied a few documents. I'm going to get everything else for you within a week or two. That's not a problem. But in, in the meantime, the last meeting, I didn't attend. I wasn't notified that there was a meeting with respect to this project. So I understand you, you guys discussed a potential public hearing to modify or rescind the subdivision. So I didn't attend that meeting, so I listened to it on LoMister TV, which is a great asset. And part of that discussion that the board had was to move it forward to a public hearing because you didn't have a covenant agreement for a performance guarantee for the subdivision. So at the honest meeting, we offered to give you a copy of that covenant. The covenant, which you have now, was approved by the planning board, signed by John Suzo, chairman, and recorded at the registry of D. So you have a copy. So that's one of the issues that really is crossed off your list with respect to moving forward with public hearing. The other that I heard loud and clear was, it's been a while, regulations have changed, right? And so one of the regulations that's important to you is stormwater management. So, and again, to update the plans from where they are, where they, where they were approved back in the early two thousands to today's standards, it's a very simple process. I would offer it to the board that I get together with Elizabeth and John Roseberry, go over those modifications, very simple to make, and then come back to the board with those modifications. And, and those modifications don't have to be considered major modifications to elevate to the level of a public hearing. Those are very small construction-related changes that can be made, such as, you guys have heard the term water quality units many times, right? So it's very simple to put an inline water quality unit from the, you know, between manhole and the discharge of the deep basin and you put that in online and then bingo, you meet the regulations today. There's, there's all kinds of simple things we can do. Mr. Exares is absolutely willing to do that. It's never been an issue with him with respect to that. So again, those are the two things I heard loud and clear. I think those can be resolved very simply. The other thing I heard was, you tried to drive it. You know, you don't have a Ford. I get it. That's okay, but...
Maybe I was on the wrong road. Yeah, but you had it.
His foot, his feet gets swollen.
So here's the deal. So I, I literally haven't been on that site in quite a while since we staked it all out. So I actually went up there and drove it myself. And you can drive. I drove the whole thing.
Maybe I was on the wrong road.
But it all, maybe, maybe you're in the wrong location, but it all, fairness, I think the access from the road was impeded with some vegetation, but once you get past that, it opens right up.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I would welcome the board to have a site inspection before you really take any action on this to see what's been done. When I went up there and drove the whole thing, I saw the sewer manholes, the water manhole, the water and sewer drain, water and sewer manholes, stormwater, all the hydrants, all the gates, all the posts for the sewer services and the water services, they're all installed. They're all there. The basin's there and operational as well. So all the infrastructure is there. Now that said, one of the things in Elizabeth's memo was no as-built plan. And my response was, it really isn't required at this stage of construction. What, when it is required is when Mr. Exares is ready to start building homes and he wants to come back to the planning board and get lot releases. The board would typically say, I want an as-built and then I want you to do one of two things. We have enough lots left over in this covenant agreement that'll cover if we have to take and construct or, or based upon the as-built plan or what's been done, come up with a bond estimate and then post a performance bond, either or. That, that's how it's typically moved forward. So the covenant is in place. We can do one of, one of the other when it's appropriate, but it's appropriate right now to continue the project, get it paved, binder course only, and then come back to the planning board with an as-built and talk about additional performance guarantees. I, I also welcome the board to, to have a site lock on a Saturday, Sunday, midweek or whatever. And let's get up there and have a conversation on what's been done and offer also, like I said, stormwater management, very simple to do, to upgrade more TSS removal or whatever the case is, if we can meet the, the current regulations. So I offer those comments for the board and look forward to a discussion.
The, there are a number of issues that come up, okay? Is, is the project, is there or not opposition? I don't think there's opposition to the project. There probably is opposition.
Well, so I don't need to...
The timeline, okay? And, and, and it's been, you know, it was an approved project and subdivision regulations take two years, then come in for an additional two-year extension. Well, it's only been eighteen. So, so... Oh, they're about. So I, I don't want to get into dates.
Not accurate.
Okay. So we just want to correct it so we can get back onto the, the same stream.
So that, that, that's my question. Are you, so, are you... Are you, so are you saying that there, I just had the language, are you saying that that there's been substantial completion of the subdivision? That there hasn't been a lapse of the two years?
Yeah, so, so go ahead.
There's a number of things. First off, and some of you were here.
Did you say your name for the report?
Jim Exaros, I'm the developer. Some of you were here way back then, so you know the history of the project, and some of you are not, so. Back in 2000, project was subdivided called Summit Estates. The plan, I hope you guys all saw the plan, I think it was sent to you through the.
We're receiving it.
Has everybody seen the drawing? It's important to understand the drawing, because it's important to the sequence. Summit Estates has twenty-three lots with a cul-de-sac. It was approved in 2000. The covenant was recorded in 2004, 2005, properly done. Covenant does not require a performance bond unless you want to convey the lots out, it's specified right in the covenant.
That's right.
So we did what we're supposed to do. We paid for all the water supply and spent it at DPW. Everything installed was properly inspected. We began the construction process. In 2006, we started another subdivision called Crown Point, which is on an adjacent piece of property. The planning board, and because they were intelligent and wanted proper planning, wanted a roadway that accessed Central Street from Leggett Hill Road. And what they did is they modified Summit Estates. You remove the cul-de-sac, and you ran a connector road through Summit Estates and made it part of Crown Point. This happened in 2008, so Summit Estates stopped because there's been a major modification. Now in 2008, when we start to do this project, and we begin to start Crown Point, there is a requirement to install or upgrade a pump station at Jitec Park. It's a board requirement, it's in my condition. I go to Jitec Park, I pay for the upgrade of the pump station, and there's a legal issue there that I'd like to talk to the board about privately, not on camera, because it affects the completion of the project. And I think you need to know about it.
I don't know if we can do that, but.
If we have a site walk, I could explain it to you.
Okay.
So there is a legal issue with accessing Jitec Drive. City doesn't own the road. And you had me upgrade a pump station offsite, I have to use my infrastructure, I don't have access to it. So I'm trying to get access to it, and I've been working on it. These are things that you're not aware of, that I'm trying to bring to your attention. Subsequently to that, you put a condition on it that you phase it. I can only do twenty homes a year. It's 229 lots. How do I comply with a two-year regulation? But I can only build twenty lots a year, and it's a 229 lot subdivision. I can't comply with this requirement and violate that requirement. So I don't believe that two-year requirement applies to this project because of the size of it and the way it was phased. Also, when you approve this project, you're looking at the 2012 regulations. Those were in place in 2004. There was no two-year requirement in 2004. If you go back and look at your 2004 requirements, that condition is not part of it. So all these things taken into consideration, I think, give us a little bit of latitude to work the other. Having said that, the zoning hasn't changed, but slightly. The infrastructure's all in place, you need to go look at it, because I think when you see it, it doesn't make sense to move sewer lines that have been blasted and ledged eight feet and disrupt all those homes that have been built up there. Because I built over thirty homes up there, plus there's thirty more homes up there, they're all in the bedroom. You start relocating services, you open up Pandora's box. Also to be considered, those sewer lines are active. There are homes using those sewer lines as we speak. If you take this project and you modify it, embed it, or rescind it, why would I want to have an active sewer line running through my private property? And what am I going to do, cap it and wait for the homeowners to call screaming? That's not a good solution. We have committed to you in the first meeting, we're committing to you right now. Tell us anything you want for drainage, quality, as far as a timeframe. Tell us what you want, and we will agree with it, in writing, however you want to do it. There's no reason to revisit this particular subdivision. That's just my opinion, and I express that to you honestly and openly. But you're the planning board, I own a lot of property, I've been here for years and years and years, and my kids are gonna be here for years and years and years, and I want to get along with you guys. I want to do what you want, to have proper planning, and do a nice project, and not disrupt the neighborhood. I live there, I'm a resident. All my neighbors are the people that are their butters. I don't have one complaint. I only have one problem, that's one. So I want to keep it that way, and I would ask for your help to do that.
Yeah, we're not looking to start it, okay?
I appreciate that.
Okay, but we just want, we know that especially with water quality, and there have been some changes over the years, and because of the lapse of time, okay, we'd like to see those things taken care of.
We're all in on that, Joe, we're a hundred percent with you, all in. I just don't want to spend three hundred thousand dollars for a pump station, four hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure, and then say, well, we're gonna start this thing. It's not fair.
I think the intention was, maybe, maybe the, maybe it's semantics, it wasn't really, because under, under the statute, we can modify or rescind or amend it, but I think maybe, you know, and I still think we have to do it this way, to be honest with you.
We have to.
I, because if you, because what we're doing is we're modifying it if we're gonna comply with the, with the current regulations.
Right.
But if we're doing it voluntarily, what is the issue?
No, no, we're just gonna open it up.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to re- reactivate the project, because, you know, for legal reasons.
Look, let me ask a question, wouldn't it be, first, we have to decide whether it's a minor or major modification? Right? I mean, because this is a modification.
Yeah, we don't know what the modification is.
We don't know what the modifications is. So let's refer at the site, see what some of the modifications, let's get, let's get intelligent on this, and I kind of agree that we should, if everything's approved, and it's modifications to, to meet the criteria, why would we put it in the public meeting? Public hearing? Would be an informational meeting or a hearing?
So my recommendation to the board, to simplify it a little bit, is let's schedule a site walk, so the board sees the entire site. Allow us to come back to your next meeting with a proposal to meet the regulations, and then you know exactly what we're going through. My expectation's going to be, the modification we're gonna propose is replacing a catch basin with a water quality unit, replacing a manhole with a water quality unit. All it's going to be is equipment use, and that's going, and I'll get a letter from John Roseberry that says it's gonna meet or exceed today's standards. And then we have that conversation. Replacing a manhole with a water quality unit doesn't rise to the level of a major amendment in my mind.
And then we decide it's a minor modification.
You guys can vote on it, but you'll, you'll know what exactly, you know what the issues are gonna be.
And along with that, we already met with John Roseberry and agreed to how we're gonna handle the current infrastructure. We're cambering every single line, we're chlorinating every single water line.
Pressure testing.
We're pressure testing every sewer line. So we already have a program with him right now in place that we both agreed to.
Yeah, we can get copies of that and have it on file, right?
Yeah, you know.
Except in my email.
Yeah, we get that.
All right, all right. We already worked all that out with DPW. Because even though everything was inspected, the way the DPW works, your standard operating procedure is. The inspectors inspect the infrastructure as you put it in.
Right.
But they don't sign off on it until you call for a water meter. That's when they sign your building act. Of course, those people are no longer with the DPW.
They've all retired.
They've all retired. They have, Lee Robbins and. So the, so the solution is.
We're trying to, we're trying to close the ends.
Yeah, you're doing a great job, I appreciate it.
Okay? And that's what, that's why I was saying, if we had to go to the hearing, by bringing it up in the hearing, we just close the ends, we verify what we're doing, you get the continuation and the approvals, like, hey, there was a minor modification, no big deal, and we're forward, and then, and then you work out.
We remove everything you're doing except the public warning.
And everything is covered.
And the other thing, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, the other thing is, now that I'm reading this, this is substantial completion, it's actually a completion of the project. So, you know, that it actually has to be completed within two years. And I know, you know, I mean, Mr. Exaros, you make a good argument about it's almost impossible for you to do it when it's linked to the other ones, so. But I, you know, I'm just, I'm just looking in terms, in some ways, my difficulty is also protecting you, because I don't want a situation to come back saying, this wasn't done the right way. But let's start, without delaying it, let's schedule a site plan.
A sidewalk.
A sidewalk, that's why, and then.
And then, and then let me think about it. It's a minor modification, we shouldn't have to proceed.
And I'm not, again, I'm not being difficult, but it's, this is a little bit different than a minor modification, because there's been a, there's been a, there's arguably a lapse. That's the thing.
There is a lapse there.
But, and I.
And how the lapse happened is not, you know, the law doesn't allow me to, you know.
Well, I, because I, I kind of want to absorb what Mr. Exaros said, maybe Mr. Rowe can call, maybe I can talk to you tomorrow more about, more about it, just because I don't want, I'm not trying to be difficult, but at the same time, I don't.
Trying to protect you.
Yeah, so maybe if we, I don't know if we can talk at one o'clock tomorrow, just to, just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Exaros says.
The other thing we probably have to change, what you mentioned before with the lots.
It's the number.
You got Crown Point, and you got Summit. Now Summit's on the southerly side of Leggett Hill, right?
I don't know, I don't know if it's southerly or easterly, I think it's the easterly, but I think it's the easterly.
The easterly side?
Southeast.
East southeast.
Southeast, southeast, okay? So the vote that we're taking, you know, makes Summit a separate and distinct project, not talented Crown Point.
Summit is now distinct and separate, we have, we have already done that.
Yeah, that's what I thought you had.
Going back to the cul-de-sac of the twenty-three lots, we're going to Crown Point.
And I thought that was separate, so.
Absolutely.
And the, so that takes the conditions of the twenty houses a year and all that, that goes away.
Agreed.
Okay? So then, so that opens this whole thing up, and you can move on.
I appreciate that. Yes, you're thinking exactly what we're thinking.
So, so what you're doing, but I just, we want to do that, we need the vehicle to do that. And one of our vehicles to do that is the hearing. That way we make it open and, and correct. We can make our corrections, we have our hearings, we know it's gonna work, work it out, and we're all covered. And that's, that's the only thing. You know?
I gotta tell you, I don't want to tell the board legally anything, because you're all very intelligent, you're both lawyers, you're attorneys, but there's mortgage on that property, you couldn't rescind that if you wanted to. So you can try.
And that's the other, that's the exception to eighty-one W.
So you can have the meeting, but you can't modify or rescind. If I want to be an obstructionist, I can tell you, I'm not doing anything. I'm not leaving it alone, but I'm not being a wise guy, I'm trying to work with you.
The intention was never to rescind it.
No, I understand, but you can't even modify with a mortgage on it. You can't. And I'm not trying to be a wise guy, I'm trying to work, yeah?
No, I'd be hoping I'm saying now you'd.
My kids graduate, one graduate looking at school, one graduate at business school, one graduate at law school. And they're gonna build here for the next thirty years, and I want you people on my side, not again. I'm not here to argue, I'm here to cooperate.
So let's, let's pick a, yeah.
Do you want a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do a sidewalk.
Do you want to do morning, do you want to do after-work hours, what looks best for the board?
These guys work, so.
All right, I'm retired, I.
I'd like to take a look.
Except with everybody there.
So it's four o'clock, five o'clock? It's getting dark, we're about to change.
Five o'clock, depends on the day.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna change five days.
Soon.
Want to do a weekend?
No.
It's not really a big bug. It depends on when.
Do you want to do it this week? Do you want to do it tomorrow?
It's gonna rain every day.
How about Monday? Monday's supposed to be nice.
Monday's good.
Monday's a holiday for, for city, but, I mean, if the board wants to go on a holiday, it's.
I'm off, so.
Yeah, I could do Monday.
Day, actually, that'd be great. Oh, no, wait.
Do we need Jamie, because he won't be there Monday.
I'll be in Maine, so Jimmy will be around.
I'll be there. I don't know if you need Jamie. Any air in point of view?
See what time I get there.
Do you want to do the fourteen?
Hold on one second, I'm just checking my clock.
What day, what day is that?
That's Monday, it's August day.
That's fine.
I'm just checking.
What time is it, it's time?
He's gonna check.
Paul's just checking.
She's waiting for my app to move.
Okay. Your app, come on.
So I get back to Paul's in a minute, so I can do, we have to.
One o'clock? Two o'clock?
Carol, can we do it? Oh, you're off.
Do you want to do three?
It doesn't matter.
Is that better?
It doesn't matter.
Two o'clock.
I think two, anytime after two should be fine for me.
Two o'clock, one to fourteen.
Okay, then you'll send an invite with the address?
The entrance has some crushed stone, crops of rock.
This sidewalk is going to be open, it's going to be open to the public.
The patient's still there.
I clearly.
So we need to say where it's going to be.
We got a lot of junk rubbish back there. So the neighbors were calling me saying, Jimmy, there's people dumping rubbish back there, because you come in the horseshoe, and it's secluded back there. So I let the, I let the front grow up so that they can't get in there. And when I saw that you couldn't get access, I cleared it up, and now it's wide open, and we have good, real good access.
I'm like, you'll to the left, and then there.
A couple questions, housekeeping matters. Is the public, the public's hearing this right now, it's going in the minutes, are they allowed to be on your property?
Yes.
They are?
For the sidewalk, absolutely.
Okay, so we need to specify a designated spot now where people can park safely and migrate to the, to the to the site. So you know the area?
There's plenty of places, there are a lot of places, but I don't know if I can give you a real place.
Well, we can go right up, just drive up the road.
It's very accessible.
Yeah, we'll just park on.
Is the access road.
The access road.
So park on Leggett?
No.
No. On the access road to Summit.
But is there a name of that road?
Access road.
The road under construction.
Yes.
Access road to Summit, is there an address?
No.
No. And you're gonna send that out with them.
We'll post it.
What I can do, if you'd like, I can give you the address to the two homes on each side of the access road, and we can send the road in between.
I think the number.
Yeah.
They can put a parcel ID on it, that's fine.
Something to put in the.
I can, we can send that back.
Imaginary.
Okay, so you'll get me that?
Yes. Everything is safe, there's been all covers on everything.
Can you get me that by tomorrow at noon, so that I can post it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Another housekeeping matter, the board has made a motion, had made a vote to schedule the consideration for a public hearing on November fourth, and we have it written there. So does the board want to make a motion to cancel that public hearing on the fourth?
So moved, yeah.
Motion made and seconded to cancel the public hearing on the fourth for Summit Estates.
Because we get the information we need, which is.
Is there a?
Second, go.
Say aye?
Aye.
Both say no?
You can cross it up.
We'll have to schedule a meeting of some kind for the modifications.
Yes.
All right, so we'll see you next Monday.
Great. Thank you for your time, guys.
Have a great day.
Three point one.
Thank you.
Two, two point one.
Oh, two point one. Two point one is done.
Then it'll be available for October twenty-first meeting.
Site plan approved for one twenty-two Water Street.
So this application is a four-part application. Essentially, what the applicant is proposing is to reconfigure, figure the internal walls at one twenty-two Water Street to add additional housing units, add additional apartments, and reconfigure the parking slightly to allow for a path to go through the parking, I think it pertains to the rail trail. And as a requirement for this, the site plan and approval is required, and then three special permits, one for use, one for parking, and one because the property's in the floodplain.
So we need a public hearing.
So we need.
November fourth, do we have anything on November fourth?
Nothing.
So I, I make a motion to schedule the site plan for November fourth at six thirty.
Second.
And the next one, want to do them all in block?
Yes, make that.
No, you have to do them separate.
If we can combine them in block, three point.
No, she's saying, he's saying to do the vote, so.
Do the vote.
Be vote, yes, separate. So November 4th, the first one is at 6:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Special permit approved for 22.
For the use?
For use.
Motion for 6:31.
Second.
November 4th at 6:31. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. For parking.
Motion for 6:32. There you go, second.
6:32. For parking. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Work in the floodplain.
6:33. Motion for 6:30.
Second.
The work in the floodplain. Any discussion here and un-called for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Site plan approved for 133 Natural Street.
Can we do it on the same night?
It could be. It's 123.
Let's say 6:45 on November 4th. Yeah, do it.
Yeah, 6:45.
Second.
Doesn't matter for all.
Motion made and seconded for November 4th at 6:45 for 133 Natural Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Special permit for use for 133 Natural Street. 6:46.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries. Continued divination approved for Meadowlands and Willard. It's continued.
What was the date we put on that? 10?
It should be here. I think my flight ticket's early on that day.
October 23rd, 6:30.
6:45. You have Mary Avenue Extension.
Yeah, 6:45. So we'll go with that.
It's already done. Site plan approved for 31 Fuller Street.
Did that?
We did that. We accepted it. Okay, planning board recommendation for city competition, 6:20. Joseph Bassett intends to take voters to accept Barry Lane as a street that city limits from the legal affairs. What we're doing here...
Did they not get the information?
Yeah, this, this is that whole street acceptance.
No, no, I understood, but did they not get the information through the DPW?
Yeah, the DPW said this is okay. This is, the city's already voted to lay out these two roads.
It's been voted, and what we're going to do is that information is going to go back to the city council and say, it's up to you.
Yeah.
And then, on that one, because they got, they've got, the city council is going to say, okay, we want to do eminent domain. And they've got to come up with the money to do it. Or the people, okay, or the, the other option is, is that the people that want to get accepted, they take and they pay for a lawyer to do the, to create the deed. And then they present the deed to the city. And, but everybody's got to sign off on it. And that's, so that's, so that's, that's the options that they have. So we already have a letter back from the lawyer a couple of years ago saying that that's what the process is, so we just...
Couple of years ago? 13 years ago.
13 years ago.
That's a little... That's a couple of... In comparison to...
Yeah, 13 years ago, saying, here, you know, the city council, it's in your hands. So what they want to do now. So that's, so in that case, all I'm going to do is refer them back to the lawyers who have dated...
Yep, sounds good.
Okay?
So moved.
And motion made and seconded to refer them back to previous communications with the city solicitor. Same thing with 6.2.
There's some moves done.
Okay? Now, to let you know, I have talked to Elizabeth about this, and we're going to try to meet with the DPW and some other people, okay? And the city council, let's come up with a plan. So that we can put the steps in place.
Yes.
Okay?